And you're welcome.
She said they were waiting to see what other school.
And you thought that should be you, so you don't.
Is there any time? Two minutes.
Yeah.
Speaking of gambling, two minutes.
Yeah, I come up.
Yeah, that's right, that's love.
Ten, ten possible.
Put my name. I'll call you, call you up. When I call in, you know.
You can understand that you didn't get to see your mom.
One group come on the team. You know, that is a school happening, this is, there is a problem. And you keep them grouped like that. And so they get some teachers out and then I guess what going in because the, you know, the most of the time, but sanitation. This is it.
Can you say that way? I know, right? Don't you just feel this sinking feeling when you hear that? Okay, what do you want?
And it's nothing else.
That's not, that's not bad.
And have enough of staff members. You know, and it looks like some staff numbers don't really come. Well, with all this technology, you know, the staff number can be an isolated one. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to bring our regular business, the Warren County Board of Commissioners, our regular November the second business meeting to order. If you choose to do so, I ask that you stand for a moment of silence, a prayer, and pledge of allegiance. Your honor and pardon me, thank you. And your promise to us, and where two or three are gathered, you are there in this. Lord, we welcome you. You will honor us today and celebrate the gift of life that you have latched upon for each of us. We ask that you open our ears so that we can hear your voice, open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom, open our spirits so that we may know that you are leading and guiding us, and open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. We ask, we ask all of these things in your glorious name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see by our agenda, that we have a lot of business to discuss and adhere to on the county. I want to take a moment to acknowledge a very special person that is with us tonight. She has been with us for twenty, uh, so odd years and she has done an outstanding job here in the community, uh, raising her family here and being from here, and she has done a wonderful job for the Board of Commissioners for quite some time. Yes, Ms. Angelina? I can see where I am, yes, I'm talking about you. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is finally to be Ms. Angelina's, um, last official, um, board meeting with the Board of Commissioners, um, in a holistic approach as I put it. She has decided to, um, become an astronaut, I think, right? She's retired, she's retired. And she has done an exceptional job for the Board of Commissioners throughout the years, and she would definitely be missed. Ladies and gentlemen, if he would, I'll allow a round of applause for this. Mrs. Angela, I would also yield to you for a few words if you would like to express anything. Now, you've never been a person with short words, now.
Well, I, I count it a pleasure and a privilege to have served my hometown, my home county, for twenty six and a half years in emergency services, Mrs. Jan, as clerk to the board. So I thank you for letting me serve because without the Commissioners, I wouldn't have a job. But it's been a pleasure and I'm available, I'm stationed, I'm available to just assist in whatever way I can because there's been a wealth of knowledge that I've learned over the years and I don't want it to die out. So thank you again, and I'm still here as clerk until February first, but my official duty is in the end of November. Thank you.
She will be missed. Okay, um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, um, we are also going to go into our, um, 2020 census special recognition, um, Ms. Elena, Ms. Pullman, Elena Pullman. Will you come up here, please? I'm going to actually read it to her mother, Ms. Paula Pullman. Yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you better, uh, know of another person that could express what this, this Elena Pullman is doing to help out with the, um, 2020 census.
Well, part of the podium. Well, I will come up with an idea, a very good idea to, to make videos of some of the Commissioners encouraging people to, um, make sure that they got their census taken care of. And Elena kind of got voluntold to take those videos and edit those videos because the videographer wasn't the greatest, and I won't mention who that was, it made it the movie. Um, so Elena was able to take those videos and then turn them into what we also call Facebook, um, so they're very great. We got to do some highlights of this.
Absolutely. And Elena, I was expecting your mom to give you a little bit more than that, but I tell you, Elena, how, you know.
Eighteen.
She's eighteen, she's been involved, and you're gonna get me, you're gonna stay, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I did good, 'cause I grew up in the East City. But, um, she's been active, and this is, this is what we were talking about, and it's keeping our young people engaged and, and, and in the community by involving them. So it, it brings good joy, good joy to my heart that Elena, you, you know, decided to stay, even though you may say, but you're still caring about home and it, I think that we're gonna see that the numbers as far as the 2020 census has been really good, but, um, thank you, half of the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Warren County, we really do appreciate your hard work and your concern about getting the numbers together for this 2020 census. Thanks again. Another round of applause. Yeah, let's get it. Ladies and gentlemen, um, I'm gonna, uh, ask Mr. Harrison if he would come up. Mr. Harrison is in line. Mr. Harrison, if he would come up. Mr. Harrison's been working with the, uh, 2020 census. I want to give you a brief overview about their work as far as the 20 census, um, uh, committee. Mr. Harrison.
Uh, work was done by the members, uh, for the, uh, for the Census Advisory Council. Uh, the work on the census was done by the members of the different districts and so I'd like to recognize those that are here at night, at night talent, Mary Drew, uh, Ron Skow, and, uh, no, we've heard anyone else without the minute. But, uh, Ms. Franklin, Kathy Harris, and Patty Spadette were also really actively involved in all of the work on their, on their social network, reaching out to people at their churches, following their neighbors, and encouraging everyone to be registered for the census. So they deserve all of the credit.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, I think you're gonna give us a, a little rundown there, correct? Are you gonna give us a little rundown on the, the census report, please?
Um, I can't. Uh, I understand that there's a whole confusion when you went up to the U.S. Census, the 2020 Census website and you looked to see what the recording was self response for Warren County, you saw forty seven point four percent. Uh, and, uh, and what we were saying, we had on our census monitors, we got to about ninety one percent that were reported to the county. The reason that forty seven percent is there is the census counts the total number of housing units in Warren County. And, uh, and the information from the Greenfall Area Census Office said that there were eleven thousand nine hundred forty eight, uh, owner occupied, I don't know, of housing units in Warren County, and above those, nearly seven thousand seven hundred and eighty were occupied. So that forty seven is forty seven percent of the eleven thousand nine hundred. When you run that number, you see that, uh, seventy two point eight percent of our registrations were made, were self reported. The remaining, uh, twenty, uh, seven percent were in the follow-up, the door-to-door, uh, follow-up from the area census office. So that's why the numbers look really different. It's because they cannot, forty seven gets a total number of housing units whether they're occupied or not. We're not sure exactly how many people were counted because although we have very good data from a self-response, uh, the census door-to-door, uh, county was aggregated over the twenty, about thirty-two counties in eastern North Carolina, so it's just one number for all thirty-two counties. So we're, we're sure we're at ninety-one percent, we hope we're up in the ninety, uh, ninety-seven, but we won't know until the census report is approved. Is that sufficient?
Absolutely, Mr. Harrison, spot on. Thank you, sir. Uh, before we move on, I would actually like to recognize Ms. Angelina, and if you would, uh, read off the names for the 2020, uh, Census Complete Count Committee and, and recognize them also, please.
For the 2020 census complete count committee, consisted of Ellen Ross Holmes, Debbie Forman Ball, Eric Killiers, Felicia Capress Sánchez, Christie Harris, Tasha Turner Brothers, Bob Miller, Thurly, Saul, and the community, who's now retired, Warren County, uh, Colonel Page from ROTC, Sean Williams, Chelsea Jennings, radio station, newspapers. And this committee met for two years and they did community participation, uh, we did radio programs, newspaper articles, we distributed literature throughout the county, uh, we had Uncle Sam and the ladies' liberty that went to a lot of, uh, public events and passed out information about the census. We attended festivals, community events, we had school system participation, we presented to local government, uh, we had citizens summit, February 17th, here at the Omri, which was regional, uh, about four or five counties participated, and we had people in the community that volunteered to assist those that did not have community capabilities that before totally hid and couldn't do that. And so the census battery was formed throughout the county at different public events and a lot of this latest activities took place. And we thank, uh, the county for allowing us to participate and thank the committee for the great work it did.
Thank you, Ms. Angelina. Uh, I also, I'd like to add that I think Commissioner Pierce was involved in a lot of that too, so I want to definitely recognize Commissioner Pierce on her behalf and her engagement on the 2020 census also, so we thank you. All right. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, also, I recognize, I do not want to leave out anybody, but I want, I recognize that we do have a school board member, uh, Ms. Sims, that's here, just where you can handle a little bit there. I know y'all had a little challenging thing going on with the education and school system stuff, but I recognize that, that you are here tonight, we appreciate you being here tonight, and, um, we're behind you, we're behind you. Thanks for all you do. All right. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Commissioners, I would entertain a, a motion that we address item number one, which is adopt our suggested agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the suggested agenda.
Second. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Power that we adopt our suggested agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed name, motion is carried. Ms. Angelina, if you would read our conflict of interest disclosure statement, please.
Members of Warren County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby of their duty under the safety of the public access act to avoid conflict submissions and the appearance of such conflict. And in further, all instructors to the 2020 census, if any matters, coming to the board and commissioners would respect to make various conflict submissions or appearances of conflict. And according to the city government, every activity we do need every board member to avoid or conflict submissions and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict submissions or appearance of conflict would respect for any matter coming to the board to debate? If so, please identify the conflict and retire from any undue participation in a particular matter involved.
Okay. Ms. Baker, any? Ms. Powell?
Yeah.
Ms. Pierce? And Mr. Hunt? And neither do I. Thank you so much. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the board, we're gonna move on to item number two, which is, uh, we have to conduct a public hearing, and this is the petition for rezoning residential to commercial, RZ 2020 dash O two, one parcel, zero point six nine plus acres from residential, um, to neighborhood business at, um, part of Tax Mac, map, uh, L two C dash two fifty five on, is that Egoious? Ignolious, what is that? Okay, close enough to me. Trail at Luther Creek Road and, uh, the River Township. So at that time, we will be conducting this public hearing at this time. Um, I entertain a motion that we enter into this public hearing.
Chair, I move that we enter into a public hearing to discuss rezoning issue.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Pierce, that we enter into our public hearing to discuss, and the item is stated on item two, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion is carried, we hereby in the conduct, it's just, we are hereby, uh, entering to the public hearing, and I believe Mr. Jones, I'll start off with you and then you can relate to whomever.
I need to get my microphones together, so, thank you, Chair. I will have, uh, Mr. Ken Crew, our planning director, to come up and give a brief overview.
Good evening.
Good day, ladies.
So, yes, we have the Board of Commissioners, a petition to be delivered in small pieces of property. If anyone is familiar with what used to be the Link House Pub off of Luther Creek Road, possible, there was a restaurant for years and then, uh, plunder and basically at the same time, very loud, something after desk, you bought it sometime ago and with the idea of it's a good business, you know, it's an operating foundation, that is done, I don't know if you've heard of that. It is appropriate to zone, it's a business because of the nature of that property, the skirt, we have moved that and also the business, the jet ski operation, both sales and rental, being appropriate for that business. However, as he has grown, he needs to have more room for, uh, putting his product out there, so he is seeking a small piece of property that's lost the road for rezuplication, which as you see in the map is, uh, hard to see up there at the top. Where the people located, that is where the current lakeside businesses, you can see that large easement that's circling around to the south of Luther Creek Road. So there's a small portion of the, it's a site that was rented in between the easement and the adjacent property, which is what was subdivided off, purchased by different bodies, and he's seeking to rezon from residential to neighborhood business. It's moving hard to see on the particular map, but to the left of that easement, there are several properties that are already in neighborhood business. It's with the planning board that in September, our recommendation to be planning board in the status favorable to approve and report at this board during the public hearing to potentially change the farm residential to neighborhood business. It be consistent with the Navy's pattern and the Navy's plan in that area, and, uh, any questions, we have to answer them, and the advocate and all students here as well answer questions.
Okay. The Board of Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Crewley? All right, thank you, Mr. Crewley.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, are there any citizen comments in reference to this public hearing?
No signups.
No signups. All right. Any questions for the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Jones? And Mr. Kingsbury? Well? I entertain a motion that we adjourn the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
Circle. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we adjourn the public hearing. We hereby adjourn. All right, ladies and gentlemen, um, we're gonna move right on to item number three, which is citizens' comments. Uh, Ms. Angelina, how many do we have?
Four, five, five, and then three submitted written.
All right, uh, we entertain the submitted written first, and Ms. Angelina, if you would read those.
Citizen comments. I would like to address the proposed committee's zoning height as it relates to the chateau on the lake development. This decision has an immense effect on my property and the various states as well as my neighbors, as noted previously, in times where my property directly borders proposed developments. I have a simple bookworm of the closest building worth to this property, a seventy-foot building of eighty height, which is true on our property, especially a building that the town's people have top floor. One hundred foot building with ten trees, two trees, with cherry trees, especially this hotel development would be a direct mine of sight for my property, and in turn of the chores would have a direct mine of sight for my house and everything else. I urge you to consider this in making your decisions regarding the volume, height, any proposed development, or any points of business, and the lifestyle we look forward to in purchasing this property. It is a prior comment on the period that they record. Their Board of Commissioners, members of the town and then east, their Board of Commissioners are right to respect the proposed changes in Warren County's zoning order that's required. The Board of Comptess, uh, controls that for lake development, and the misguided ideas of former Warren County, uh, director, is considering changing the parent height limits for lakeside business and native business from forty to sixty feet. Additionally, Board is considering allowing land, unit developments that are commercial residential, the building from a current maximum of forty feet to a side seven feet. The only entities that CR additional use requests I am aware of as of today, is the question to build the chateau on the lake. As proposed, that project is entirely inconsistent with the funding of residential property and inconsistent with this property cause. I am free. Many Warren County zones will allow the partial surrounding developments limited to thirty-five point eight acres, that are developed, but that building heights are two, two and a half tons higher. These changes, zoning heights, do not take into account the adverse impact to parrot existing LD and NV communities that have developed over decades on the Warren County zoning order. It is clear that the proposed height changes, like addition of the unit CR to the county zoning order last November, for proposed construction of that project at the expense of rest of Warren County. The proposed zoning height amendment fails to take a holistic view of the needs of Warren County on the face of one individual, changing the law to serve one developer at the expense of the community, should be protected. Even though many developers sought to build one hundred feet of Warren County, allowing fast height differences between structures, this regards to stored zoning heights in developed areas and other areas, the adverse impact to character and aspects of these neighborhoods, for these reasons and many others that cannot fit into a three hundred fifty word contract, I ask the Board to reject all zoning height amendments being proposed. Warren County's current zoning heights of getting to the county allow proposed development without laws to be a charm that draws people to it. Certainly, Warren County.
Hi, Ms. Angelina, who we have, um, first in person.
And that's a ten, five-minute term.
Five minutes.
Yes. Um, I haven't seen how it's being done as far as, um, as far as the questions being responded. A couple of questions and just concerns that the citizens have. These questions and concerns are about four houses square in Warren. And, um, first of all, we are really concerned about this being done, being taking place from the time between the middle of pandemic. Next thing is, um, where, where the money coming from, whether it's from Warren? Will Warren County tax dollars be funded just in any way? Uh, again, during time of a pandemic, um, there's some just some concern about how their tax paid dollars will be expended. You know, we are trying to get school, um, that's what the chairs say, um, planning, maybe doing the same with the, um, Board of Education. You know, that, um, tough times, but we also understand that there are a lot of kids that students don't have, um, getting. So if we have any money to spend, we're all paying, we're all paying expenses, and we should be one of the top of all. We should also, uh, just consider underserved, the sisters, the underserved in the community. And, um, from justice report. My next question I have is, how was this committee formed in my room? I, I did read the article, um, a couple of weeks ago in the paper, and it said, I think it said something about, I think it wanted me to go was to be of unity, unite. And, um, people feel that one of the problems that this county always had was, uh, it seemed like the same people over and over that, um, first of all, we want to know how these committees remember the first life. And to bring people together, we need to, yeah, reach out, give other people opportunity. And that's when people feel welcome, and we can start in, um, the uniting process. What the citizens really would like to see, in this way, due to the advisory committee, I'm not sure, is they committed to give the citizens opportunity to give the concerns to board commissioners, the board here. The board commissioners pass it on to other local, local elected officials, as well as state federal elected officials. But I do have to go on and say that, um, as you remember, some of the past, right, um, recently, uh, people were campaigning. Well, they could use every other word you could think of. But, um, I've been, as I look around the county, I'm like, where are these services to get help? So, um, these are just some concerns that citizens have. And, um, so I guess I have two submissions, finding out the tax bill values will be funded in Warren, in either way, is that how it works? Submit, submit, uh, questioning, um, writing and reading form and, and get a response, is that how it works?
I'm gonna let you get your time expired before we, we enter to that part of it, um, Mr. Lawson. So, uh, is that the completion of your, your comments section, sir?
No, I want, I, I want to be clear on how, do I, do I have to sponsor, do I have to do send a question, write and get, uh, so are you telling me to know where the question's coming from?
No, sir, that's not what I'm saying. I don't want to utilize your time to read out your, um, your comment section. And when that expires, I'd be more than glad to answer that for you.
Okay.
But I don't want to take your time.
Okay, thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, all right. So the answer today is, yeah, she had to, uh, put it in writing, and, um, Ms. Angelina will get that response, uh, recorded and sent it back to you. Um, but, uh, there are a few things before you take the seat, I want to go ahead and now address everything that you said. When it comes to the, uh, memorial committee that was done in full transparency, we did that here, uh, in, in a board of commissioners meeting. And that is a open meeting, and Ms. Angelina is in, is liaison, and also Mr. Kingsbury is a liaison on that board. And any, uh, proud minutes that has been conducted, and when it comes to that committee, they are open to you. And like I said, anytime that there is a committee, uh, meeting, you're more than welcome to be a part of that. Um, there are things that the committee is doing in recognition to a memorial. They are open to ideas. We don't, we haven't seen where the money is gonna come just yet. That's why the, the committee was formed to bring back a, 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 a good resolution that the commissioners can move on in reference to how to get things done out there at the committee. So the, the short answer is, we don't know yet. So, but it is, it will be done in full transparency to the citizens of Warren County. When it comes to broadband, we have been working on broadband for years. If you would probably, um, hang around, I'm not sure, Mr. Jones, who is your favorite broadband? Is it this mean or next mean? I'm, I'm sorry.
We do have a broadband related item on the agenda this evening.
Okay, if you were hanging around, you'll probably get the other day, you won't get the full update of what we're doing. But this, this board of commissioners has been working on broadband as far as the county for a number of years now. And we are moving, uh, stream, um, dynamically into what we should do as a holistic effect when it comes to broadband within this county. So, um, if you just hang around, you'll probably hear something to probably bring you up to date. So, but, um, I personally will be around, of course, you can see me after the meeting and anything else. I'll try to give you an answer to it, but to make sure that you get a dynamic response to everything that you ask, some can answer, some we cannot, make sure that Ms. Angelina, she already has. Okay, is that it right there?
This is the form we put together.
Okay, that is the form. Yeah.
Question, all right, question.
Ms. Angelina, next, please.
Next is Reverend Benner.
I'd like to reserve rank, um, later on in the meeting, maybe I can make a comment on some more information that I would see for what I think about them.
Sir, I really do appreciate you coming out tonight, I really do. Uh, is it Reverend Bender? Is that, is that correct? Is that Reverend Bender? I really do appreciate you coming out tonight and taking the time out of your business schedule to come before us tonight. But this, this important time in our business meeting is a time that we have set aside for citizens' comment. So we ask if, if there's gonna be an open citizen comment from you, that you do it at this time, please.
Then I'm forced to do that, I'll do that.
Yes, sir.
There's a quick question that I have a concern with. So-called voting poll, that voting poll is where in the, that the John Derck school like we already had, or is it anywhere?
Well, sir, that was the early voting precincts, uh, that we had read this time. Uh, the one that, uh, the Board of Election, Noel Allen, and that, uh, phone middle school, elementary school.
I can barely hear you, but.
Yes, sir.
My question to then the last, um, five, would that be a voting poll as well?
Sir, I, I, I'm not quite sure. Uh, I know we have fourteen precincts, is that correct, Mr. Jones? We have fourteen precincts, and, uh, I, that is a very important question, and we want to make sure that you get the, the accurate information. So, did we have time, somebody can step aside and, and, and make, make sure that, um, Reverend has accurate information?
If he writes us a dress down, I can go to the state and look it up. There's a, uh, site goes where you can search your polling.
And, and my question, that brought that up, I, I was, um, informed by Pastor Byron that, um, hold at the lot at the fire department. That was the same thing, because the public, the public is dealing with that, that belongs to the county, the town.
The. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Sure. I, I, I think, Mr. Bender, are you specifically talking about the Warranton rural fire department in downtown?
The one that's right in the midst of town.
Right, so in downtown Warranton, and that is a voting place.
Okay.
That is a voting place.
Yes.
And so, um, so, so I see the choice in that there, um, the one they seem like they are swaying more to, but they got more flags with that name on it than any other. Um, I'm just concerned that they don't, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and inside, in mind. So is that a, is that a formal way to, kind of, link people to the board of choice? One, one county wants us to vote for, or is that a public choice?
Well, well, when you say Warren County, sir, no, sir, that, that is not, we're not engaged in that. Uh, there are rules and regulations when it comes to the signs and all of those stuff that goes in, goes into that. And the, the board of commissioners, we do not control that.
Right. My question, who controls something like that, because I mean, I see a name over there that dominates over every, everything, I don't, I mean, if you pass all, you can see one name.
Yes, sir.
Because if you're driving by, you need to get to see multiple choices, because maybe they don't know who they have a choice of.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, oh my God, you.
Yes, sir.
I still want to be concerned with that, because, um, this is the county, I want to be in town.
Yes, sir.
And I got an opinion too, but I don't have a bunch of signs in my place dominating who people should vote for. I'm at the life, I'm in town. On the first basis you see.
What, 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 sir?
Saying, is that something that, that's, um, okay by the county, or who would I need to address to get that addressed properly, shall I say?
Well, the, the state Board of Elections regulates the, uh, the local boards.
Who should dominate the voting?
Okay, so I, I'm gonna answer your question from, from, from where we stand here. All right, Ms. Fominival, uh, is our local Board of Elections, uh, director.
Who is that?
Ms. Debbie Fominival.
Okay.
Okay, um, she, you know, her building is okay at, at the, uh, early voting site. Okay, when it comes to signs and all those type of things, the board of commissioners, we do, we do not control that. We do not control that.
So they control it. So if I want to spread it out to speak to her more next.
Just, give me out, Mr. Jones.
The state controls the, you can put your signs in where you want to, that's up to the.
Yeah, the control of the state determines where you can place them.
Right.
But I would think the. Yeah, but I think the signage itself is probably put up whether by candidates or the political group chapters are in this county, or either special interest groups. So the state tells you where you can put them, but it's up to those individual groups to put them wherever they like.
So my question is, is fine, if I want to put up twenty more signs of another choice.
You can. You can do it.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I want to know. I mean, that, I mean, I didn't realize there was that a project setting or there for anybody that wants, because I know the county, the fire department is part of town.
Yes, sir.
And I reserve that understanding, I could do the same thing my way, but I would choose to put some more flags over there, um, get some more people, put some more signs over there, so people can have a choice.
Yes, sir.
And be enforced on it.
Understood, sir. We appreciate your concern, sir, we really do. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate this opportunity to, once again, address the commissioners. And, uh, I'm here to represent the seven hundred property owners and taxpayers in Warren County. They have been authorized to be in state for Eden Farren states, uh, property owners association board of directors, has basically power to meet you tonight on behalf of the association. I'm here to recommend that tonight, on item number seven, that you table the vote on the highest tax amendment for a month, while we, Eden Farren state, take our initiated tax amendment through the planning board and onto you for consideration along with your current tax amendment. We work with Ken Crew like and have a date of, uh, whoever tends to take it through the planning board. But first, uh, an attorney asked me to read this statement to you tonight. NC State law, section one, five, three, A dash three, four, one, require that any zoning amendments be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan before rendering it soon. It is the Eden Farren state to you that the proposed zoning amendments are not consistent with the Warren County comprehensive development, which the plan calls for protection of the environment and above all, other considerations, protection of county's water resources. The proposed zoning height amendment particularly, where they would allow lakeside business heights to increase by fifty percent over the current heights, and about the P U B C R on the lakeside business zoning areas, heights up to seventy feet are clearly inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan. If the board decides to vote on the proposed tax amendment tonight, then the board of commissioners should state on the record tonight the basis for approving height amendments, how they are consistent with the Warren County comprehensive development plan. Okay, so now my, my, uh, my point's here. We had, we had had some nice meetings, some phone calls with some of you, and met with the commissioner and the county attorney, Kingsbury, several weeks ago, and it was recommended that we initiate our own tax amendment and make that proposal and go through the system, and that's what we're doing. Chairman Davis also gave us some coaching. He expects the commissioners and all other county officials to take a holistic view and do the right thing, not just agree with them. So the primary purpose of zoning is to segregate uses that are thought to be incompatible. Creation of a lakeside business zoning district was designed for low-density commercial uses with forty-foot building ice and fifty-foot setbacks. The reason here is to protect an equal system along the lake shore, and also lake shore is primarily residential and protect adjacent residential property from adverse impacts of high-density development, such as the seventy-foot building. Most everyone I know, we create seventy-foot commercial and residential buildings to be high-density use. And just about everyone I know would also agree that changing county-wide zoning impacting counties' properties for developing project on a single parcel of land is not good policy. Forget who we are. So what I'm asking you to do tonight, is to work with us. We have taken a holistic view in developing our proposals. Our proposal supports a height to accommodate county interests, a height increase to accommodate county interests. It recognizes the need to increase setbacks and buffers as heights increase, which the county tax amendment would like to do. We would suggest also that you carve out a lakeside business into lake shore equal system adjacent residential adverse impacts. Our specific proposal is to increase lakeside business to fifty-foot pipe maximum on table two dash one. Grave building height over forty feet, the front side and rear setback should be increased from fifty feet to a hundred feet. And under conditional use permits make the lakeside zoning district exempt from the height laws. Even if our tax amendment proposal is consistent with the Warren County comprehensive development plan, I urge you to do the right things tonight, table your vote till next month, when you look at our proposal side by side with the current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Ms. Espinoza.
Evening. I'm over here today, and I was concerned, you can't hear me?
I want you to speak up just a little bit, please.
Did you hear me? Okay. We have an event coming up on Sunday, okay, December. And I, my passion came like that, Mr. Crew, it has nothing to do with us, he can't sponsor us. Um, what's a Warren County, I wanted to make that different clear in all of it. Okay, he's not sponsoring us, we do this event on our own, which is what's a Warren County. Okay, now, um, I have a lot of people that I've been talking to, which is on the street. And the one real, my one real tool has been sky high. There's a lot of people that are talking about, I would like for your permission to look into it if it's possible, okay? If you want to know why it was so high, and nobody know. If you want to know why it was so high and nobody know anything about it, it just happened. And that's it. I can talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza.
Phil, we're done.
I can link somewhere. I can link.
Would you be commissioned to, uh? I feel like many times we've been here, we'll, we'll put some payroll, but, uh, back to the time tonight. What I want to talk about a little bit is what, uh, Mr. Arthur spoke about. Uh, there's only, uh, D six and code, uh, lakeside business. It was standard movement, which is developed around the lake gas and partway off the second prior. Now, I realize we all had a work session, uh, a couple of weeks ago. It was serious seventy-foot height on this, uh, amendment. And we still believe that is, is high. And, uh, when you get into the text message you're looking at, it's going to have, that would adopt to give you the dead effect of utilizing the, uh, P U C R continuing lakeside business, practically a hidden business. Hidden business would establish promote large-scale commercial development and practice for any people. The consequences of this drastic change, L D will set a very high precedent of the areas recently closed that existed lakeside business. As Mr. Arthur said, we, uh, we put, uh, put together an alternative zoning height amendment that's following October thirty with, uh, planning zoning administration in Peru. And, uh, spoke this proof tonight and indicated that he's working to get the planning board together to do this. And, uh, moving on to, uh, to view the consideration of tradition of review. So therefore, we were expecting, uh, by asking you, uh, respectfully to take the new vote tonight on the mission for you tonight and consider both the amendments that you're considering. We believe it considers the long-term effect of stopping the city community. This request is only fair and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I entertain a motion that we, uh, address item number four, which I consider agenda.
Mr. Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second property motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Pierce, that we approve our consent agenda. Is there any discussion? You and I, all the papers are aye?
Aye.
Those eight motions carried. Item number five, county manager's update. Mr. Jones, you have a vote.
Well, thank you, Chair. Um, before I get started with my items, I would like to have, if it's okay with the Board, Dr. Bray come up and do her COVID update voice.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Bray.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to start an update by, um, giving you some information from the Department of Public Health and�owers Dashboard. Um, the dashboard is updated daily with COVID nineteen cases and death information for all counties in the state of North Carolina. And so what we have before you tonight is, uh, our dashboard for Warren County, which as of, um, today shows four hundred and ninety-five total cases of COVID nineteen. Um, what's different in the dashboard from what previously I am seeing is that now the dashboard includes antigen tests, which did not include that before. Okay, so if you look at the dashboard, the graph shows positive cases beginning April fourth. And the peaks and valleys, uh, which is the main line, indicate the daily number of positive cases. And the yellow line indicates the trend of positive cases. So as you can see, we had some rising, um, cases over the last, uh, two weeks, last week in particular. Um, and so we know that the majority of the cases that we are seeing are community spread. The sharp increase last week was also because there had been outbreak at corrections. Uh, so that is why we're seeing elevated number of cases. Um, our percentage of positive tests have increased from when I last reported. It was right around five percent. And now we're about six to six and a half percent. Um, and these are results ending the week of October the twenty eighth. Uh, we are continuing to hold community testing events to increase access to testing, particularly among individuals who are unissued. And today we have, uh, more than nine hundred and seventy individuals who have tested at the event. So we appreciate all of our partners who have assisted in standing up these testing events across the county. Um, so as of five o'clock today, the case count numbers have changed. Um, have, now have a total of five hundred and one total cases of COVID nineteen in Warren County. Four hundred and six of those cases are considered recovered. Uh, have seven deaths, seven cases that are hospitalized, and we have eighty-eight active cases. Um, so I wanted to share, um, information about two resources that is available for people who are being impacted by COVID nineteen in Warren County. Uh, the first one is called the Community Help Workers Initiative. And this is an initiative that is funded by the NHS in Warren County. It's one of the fifty counties that was selected to participate. Uh, the vendor that is covering our area is Culture Americas Global, and they are associated with the university. And so Culture Americas has contracted with four area organizations to provide social supports to people in Warren County who need resources due to COVID nineteen. So those four organizations are Green World Redevelopment Organization. They're called GROW. Um, Game Free, which is in Henderson, War for Life, and New Life Connection. Um, GROW has twenty-five, um, community help workers based in Warren County. Um, I think they're all Warren County residents. Uh, and both the health department, yes, has have participated in calls through the state to talk about our roles um, in referring individuals to these programs. So I want our, um, residents to be aware of them because they can provide us social supports. So that means transportation, if you have issues with housing, all of those types of things can be made available to the, to our residents. Individuals who test positive for COVID nineteen who need to quarantine or isolate can receive services through this program, which would assist with housing. Um, it also includes financial assistance, food, transportation, medication delivery, and COVID nineteen supplies such as face masks and sanitizer, cleaning supplies. And I have to say, on two occasions, we did this where this program has really benefited our residents. We had, uh, an individual who tested positive for COVID nineteen. And at the time, she was in need of rental assistance as well as food. And so we were able to refer her to GROW, um, to get some financial assistance with her rent and able to get her some food and loads of vision. And then on this past Friday, we held a community test event here, which GROW was one of the lead organizations for that. We had an individual who came to the testing, um, event who was actually homeless. And those workers that were here, um, made calls and did all they could to try to help this person. And they were able to get housing for that family on Friday while we were here. Um, so it does work, and I just want our residents to know that if they have a need, please reach out and let us, let somebody, um, be, um, speak to those who come through our, um, system as positive. We do follow up with them. We want to make sure that if they have any need, that we connect them to these resources. And then the second resource that I just wanted to mention is the whole program, which is being sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. And this program also provides rental and utility assistance for individuals who are low to moderate income that have been economically impacted by COVID nineteen. So they don't have to, um, personally, you know, test positive because they have been in, uh, impacted economically, meaning that they lost a job due to COVID nineteen. They can get assistance, um, for rent as well as utilities. And the way to access that service is to call two-one. Uh, so those are two critical support services that, um, are available to our residents. I just want to make sure that folks are aware that they exist. So, um, state by strategy to combat COVID nineteen is through, uh, one is prevention, um, slowing the spread. The second one is testing and contact tracing. So we need to know who has COVID nineteen and who has been exposed. And then lastly is to support people to stay home and that those are those individuals who are either in isolation or quarantining of nineteen. So what we can do as individuals and as a community are to continue to practice the three D. They sound very simple, wearing a, a mask or cloth that's covering when you're out. Social distancing, laying six feet apart, and washing and disassembling hands from all very simple practices. And we can all work together to protect each other from the virus if we do those things. That's part of slowing the spread. Also, you can get tested if you have symptoms or you think you are exposed to COVID nineteen. And the third one, which I think is extremely important, is that you have to answer the call from the health department or from the COVID nineteen community team in contact. We had issues with this, we're calling individuals, and they are unwilling to say who they were in contact with, um, or who lives in their household, who could potentially be impacted by COVID nineteen. And I just need residents to understand, we're not trying to get into this, we're a public health agency. We're required by law to follow up on individuals who test positive. Why? Because COVID nineteen is a communal disease. And so we want to slow the spread of this as much as possible, but we can't do it with inaccurate information. And this is not only happening in one county, it's happening across the state. So I just need people to understand, when we ask you a question, there's a valid reason for that. And we have some individuals where we called and they say, well, I've already told my contacts that I tested positive. That is great. We're happy that you're doing that. But there are certain C D C guidelines about how and when people need to be tested. So if you tell someone that you are positive and you, and they go out and get tested, their test comes back negative. Well, seven days later, they may turn up positive. Why? Because their exposure time was at a point where they needed to wait six days before they actually got tested. So it's very critical that you guys respond back and call them because you need to make sure, one, that we're monitoring those individuals that test positive. And I have to say, the majority of, um, our cases, people do very well. They're able to recover from home. We do have some individuals that start off asymptomatic and then they develop symptoms over the course of that two to fourteen days. And we've had several individuals where we called to follow up with them. We told them, call nine-one-one because they were depressed before the rent. So it's very important for people to answer the call and to know that we're only here to help. And we're trying to make sure that we protect not only you, but other people in your household, in your community, in your family that may be impacted by COVID nineteen. And finally, I would say, um, stay home when you can, especially when you're sick. And it's very important for employers to realize that we should support employees, stay home when they're sick to minimize the spread of COVID nineteen. We get a lot of questions, questions from employers about this because they want to know when their employees can come back to work. And there are guidelines if you are a critical worker. Again, but those are things we need to speak with you about, to talk with you about your symptoms, what is happening in terms of your recovery from COVID nineteen. Uh, so these are my speaking updates for tonight. If you have any questions about COVID nineteen, we are at Warren County Health Department at two five seven eleven eight five. Any questions?
Any questions, Board of Commissioners, for Dr. Bray? With Dr. Bray, I said thank you, uh, once again. And if anybody questioned why we do updates, uh, as much as we can, because we care about you. When I say we, I, I believe everybody in this room cares about each other, and we love, uh, each and every one of you. And we want to make sure that you stay safe. We want to take care of each other. So with that said, we're just asking you to adhere to the guidelines that Dr. Bray has, uh, has stated to us tonight. And, and that you follow those things. Because at the end of the day, we are here for each other, and this is how we protect each other and ensure that we have a life of prosperity the way that we see it. And, uh, Dr. Bray, once again, thank you for coming out tonight and, and giving us a follow-up date. And, uh, if you don't mind, can you give that number one more time, how they can contact you, just in case they have any questions?
Yes, um, this is call two five seven eleven eight five, eight three two five.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bray. All right, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of other questions to discuss with you this evening. The first has to do with our cleaning contract. Uh, I went back and took a look at our records. One of the first, uh, items I was able to work on when I started with the county had to do with our cleaning service. And, uh, we had daily cleaning, we had weekly cleaning, and we have quarterly cleaning, uh, and some annual items are done. Our buildings and grounds department manages our cleaning services contract. Um, and as you know, if there is a complaint, those complaints go to buildings and grounds. You relay those to the contractor and try to have them correct those things. But I wanted to bring this to your attention because we have, uh, had some concerns here lately. And I wanted to make sure that you were, um, aware of what was going on. I saw my records that we, um, gave a letter to our contractor in twenty seventeen under a previous contract, asked him to course correct, gave him, um, a time to do that. And, uh, they were able to comply. We have not done that at this point. Uh, our contract allows us to, thirty days notice, um, terminate the contract and move to another option. Another option would be, uh, a different contractor or, um, hiring staff as county employees, which is one of the things we discussed with you, um, initially. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, we gave you an update and see if you had any questions or concerns.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jones. As I, I appreciate you bringing that tonight. And ladies and gentlemen of the Board, um, one, one of the issues that we are having, of course, um, Ms. Baylock, uh, has very much expressed a discourse about the cleaning services that, that's been going on over there. There have been other instances around the county, uh, buildings that, uh, basically the, the cleaning service has just not been there. And then I'll take you back, uh, a couple of years ago, we had the same issue with the same cleaning services. And I just believe that at this point in time, we really need to look at doing business a different way because we are spending the county's, uh, citizens', uh, money in order to keep our buildings clean properly to the extent that, you know, they have longevity. And, uh, when Commissioner Hunt was the chairperson, I think that's when a lot of this stuff started. Years later. Years later, and you're dealing with the same issues. I have, I have just recently today received, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if the other commissioners received an email from Ms. Baylock expressing her total discourse about the cleaning services in the county, uh, especially with the, uh, the courthouse. Now, the courthouse is the people's house. And we have, you know, visiting judges, people coming here, this and the third. And of course, our courthouse is a very aged out courthouse, but we don't have the means to build a new courthouse right now. And, and claiming it is not the, 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 the issue when it comes to basically, uh, building a courthouse. But the courthouse that we do have, we have to keep it clean. That's it, basically. We just need to keep it clean. And the sheriff just expressed to us in our last meeting that they're going to start jury trials in January. So our courthouse is going to be right back on track, being utilized, uh, heavily. And, uh, I think that we just need to look in a different direction. If you'll bear with me for just a minute, and I just want to read the email that this Baylock sent to us today. And I, I can, I can see where her, her issues is. It said, um, she's still very frustrated with the cleaning services that we, uh, uh, provide. she's still very frustrated with the cleaning services that we uh uh provide and she says we're not provided. I've been asking for improvements to this area for three years as I watched the courthouse become nasty, government building that is an embarrassment to our county. And um they do deserve a clean and safe environment to um to basically work and have our judges come here and citizens to visit the courthouse to be in a clean environment. Um but that said, I I think that if you were entertaining on this, that just maybe if we're gonna move into a different outlook as far as a different cleaning services. I spoke with Ms. Blaylock and she is uh on board. If we could have a part-time cleaning person there, uh part-time, maybe twenty hours a week, that can that can work there and that she can readily have accessible to her to ensure that the courthouse is clean. And I think that's a modest request, but um I would be open to ideas. And the reason why I'm expressing this so hard now, because we've been dealing with this for quite some years now, when it comes to cleaning services. And I think now, Board of Commissioners, it's time for us to do something differently. Uh at least aspect of taking care of our uh county buildings and being very responsive to the citizens' tax taxpayers' money and how we express it in that regard. So I hear any comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Chair, uh I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed. But I'm concerned about all of our facilities.
I want you to speak up just a little bit.
Can you now hear me? It's on. Green light is on. Uh but uh I haven't, I don't know if you all have had complaints from other departments, but but my concern is if when you do review, let's make sure we're technically all of our facilities because I think our employees, citizens, uh what I love the judges and and law enforcement and I and I think the courthouse really needs to be taken care of because that is an issue. But I I think we need to take it from a holistic approach and make sure all our buildings are taken care of. And uh and and I encourage with the chair in terms of the courthouse, maybe uh hiring a part-time person, I don't know if that will will be adequate or not, but at at least it's something that we really seriously need to explore. And uh and if we need to look at some other options, uh Mr. County Manager, I you know, would like for you to maybe come up with some options or strategies, you know, before the next meeting or the year out so we can uh resolve these issues.
Wait, Mr. Jones. Thank you. So so yes, I certainly understand that we can um have some options for you to consider in advance of your your next meeting. We have already started working on this issue.
Uh yes, we can have some options available for you at your next meeting. Um Buildings and Grounds Director, Mr. Williams, has already been taking a look at this issue and trying to do some options for you and we can certainly um do that.
Mr. Pierce, any comments? Ms. Baker?
No comments. I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Uh the next item has to do with our uh our convenience centers and and um Public Works Department is responsible for managing our contract with Waste Industries. As you know, we have convenience sites around the county and I have Mr. Brothers here this evening. We also, I think, were hoping we have Waste Industries uh if we have a Waste Industries person here as well. We had some comments that popped up this week uh and we wanted to make sure that we address them with how we are handling our convenience sites. So um the first thing has to do with uh who we hire for our convenience uh sites. Um I think there may have been some conversation in the past where um uh a prior uh board had asked if Waste Industries could hire retired personnel. There is nothing in our contract that restricts hiring to um uh folk who are retired because they are part-time positions. That is a lot of who is going to take those positions. But they hire whoever is interested in in those positions. We also had some concerns about whether or not we were recycling or not when we have our residents drop off recycling. We are still and Waste Industries is still recycling um and uh we wanted to make sure that we address those concerns. The last item had to do with assistance residents when they drop off their um trash or or maybe bulk items. And so Waste Industries' policy is such that they do not uh offer assistance, especially with the bulk items. However, if you as a resident go to a convenience site and periodically um the trash compactor is become full and trucks have to remove them, and if you as a resident arrive at that time when the compactor has been removed uh to be dumped, um then you have to use one of the open top um uh roll-off containers uh at the convenience site. And so we've had some concerns about whether or not um uh the Waste Industries personnel would be able to help residents or not. And I think they're prepared to address that this this evening. Uh but first, I'd like for Mr. Brothers to just come up and talk about the convenience site operations and then we'll have our Waste Industries person address uh how and what assistance may be offered to residents.
How you doing, sir?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I think I covered everything. It's just three forms on contract that I would like to check. They don't make shares of life. The uh social media complaint. And the final was in the end of the contract. The way we got it in to that year contract was they agreed to come in and put in new sizes in the house, new concrete pads, new contacts. The old system had the breakaway compact the way you know we have the the leach out when you walk into the compact, you step into the leach out. So we went to the one-piece compact, we saw the problem. One-piece compact, of course, probably I think maybe a ton or two less than the two-piece breakaway. We also um we have the roll-off over top top. Whenever the compact is full, you go to the over top. But the over top is probably about fifteen or twenty inches higher than the compact. So we so that's, I think, part of the social media complaint that the over top was too high. The second part was um we hired O P. And in the contract, in the contract, it says that Waste Industries or Free for Life members will try to recruit, wanting to assist this person. Instead, they have three men, retired or whatever they think. But um I think we have, Mrs. Spencer is here from Waste Industry, he's want to address the site attendants duties which probably has to do with this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brothers.
Thank you. Wanted to address the site attendants duties, uh pretty much the site attendants duties at uh G F L uh locations here in Warren County. Um or pretty much uh to maintain the site, uh clean, uh make sure the sites are open on time and that they direct the citizens where to place their trash or recycled items on the site. Um from time to time, those compacters do fail um and they have to be hauled. Um at that point, we normally, you know, shut down, you can't do anything, the compact is not hooked up. So you have an open top container there and you need to um send the send the citizens over to throw the trash in open top container. Um and I I understand, you know, and I think everybody would understand that um an elderly person comes to the site at the point where the compactor is being hauled. And mind you, that the compactor coming around time is probably about twenty to thirty minutes. Um but we haul it here in the transfer station in Warren County and we take it directly back to the sites. Um we do not know um those compacters will be gone from the site over a long period of time um because of it pushes the hallway of the county. So we want to minimize the amount of time that that compact is off-site. So we make every effort to to get that compact taken, dumped, and brought back and time is bashing. So you're looking at maybe twenty, thirty minutes, uh you know, time there, twenty, thirty minutes back. So an hour's time uh it could be taken out of um what you had a compact on site. Um at that point, if somebody was, you know, an elderly person, they couldn't throw something over the top, we had looked at um maybe a bag or so that they could prop off uh to be dumped. And mind you, you did, you know, kind of you don't want to open the door where somebody pulls up and they got a whole pickup truck for the trash and then they want to throw it out on the ground. And so the compact comes back, those guys are not there to to handle trash pickup and trash removal. Uh and and I go back to also um the point of if somebody's coming to the site um and removing large items from a vehicle, somebody had to help to get it in there. So if somebody's, if you're expecting to take a couch or a dresser or something large like that, probably an open container. It um should probably have a resource fifty when you come to the site. Um the liability of per um our staff and also um residents themselves, uh helping to take it out of trucks. Um it could could, you know, do a backlash on us as well for county. Is that answering his question?
Yeah, um I I believe that um this has occurred in 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 my district uh with the um the compacting being uh um being going to be emptied and whatever. And I just want to narrow this thing down because a lot of the citizens are saying that during that time that because the the compactor was gone, you know, you have an elderly person that comes that cannot, I think we have fifteen or so. Well, they can't throw their bag. And and a lot of citizens, they don't just get a bag of trash and take it back directly there. They save it over over time. So you might see a couple of bags of trash in the in the uh in the in the car or whatever they driving that day because they want to, you know, go at one time. So I guess the the issue is, and I've seen that when I've been visiting the convenience sites now, that your guys have been very helpful in throwing the trash over now. But I think that we want to look at it from a holistic view as far as uh going all over the county that if that compactor is gone, that your guys, and I'm not saying they, you know, somebody having a refrigerator there now, talking about you know, basically house trash bags, will they be able to assist an elderly person in order to reach over there? And um because, you know, if they knew that the compactor was going to be missing, they probably want to bring their trash at that time. They'll wait until they are able to assist themselves and throw it at them. So what what is your thought on that?
Um G F L's stand on it is um at at this point, we're still looking at, you know, it's you go back to the contract and look at everything in the contract. We don't want to overstep where we should, you know, as far as what the contract says. Um and it says in there that, you know, the the um site attendants are not responsible for helping to load the trash into the site. Um there again, I go back to um if it's an elderly person, I I kind of want to put a little common sense into it with the site site guys, uh there are only sites, if something's in question or if they have a problem of understanding, take one bag and if you're going to be back in ten minutes, I can throw it in there. Uh but I don't want to open a door where we we end up with influx of people coming in and closing those trash and create a problem that we're going to have to back up on. Um I would rather I would rather go back and and talk with the general manager at my facility and get a uh a little bit um better grasp on what we should be responsible for when those when those trucks are off-site with the compact.
Is is there a a mechanism that we can explore that that the uh attendant doesn't be involved in throwing the trash over? If the compactor is gone?
Uh we've looked at the the issue of that. Uh also, you got, you could put in, you know, some type of um a step up to it. There again, you got issues with people stepping up on that and following them a step. Uh you know, we're we're trying to look at everything, every possibility we can come up with to alleviate um the issue. Um and and there again, um I know like in the supply in my house in Vance County, if uh if if no one's there, you know, I'll go back down the road, come back, you know, twenty, thirty minutes later and, you know, the compact is back. Um and we've also had some other sites in the county where um especially during holiday seasons where it's a lot of traffic. Um we have um utilized the recycling containers uh for trash. Now, we we don't on a day-to-day basis, but we're trying to look at um expanding um the um a lot of other services and other um compact on sites during high, you know, high traffic times. Uh and they could, they could be part of the problem, showing up on a on a Saturday afternoon, you know, when it's you know, a lot of people coming through, coming on transport, they want to get it out before, you know, the site closes on Sunday. You know, it could overflow the the compact itself.
Chair?
No, I have one question. I just wanted to be guys. Um the only other question I have regards like that close to you also was these people talking about calls, you know, they had one really deal, their best deal for the convenience site. So I was like, you know, you can actually go what's the tax office if you're paying if you have a private home or or something along those lines. So, Mr. Jones, are you able to speak to that?
Sure. Commissioner Pierce, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Brothers. I thought that we removed the waiver option uh for that.
So even if they have a private home?
Right. I'm not aware that we we allow that at this point. All right. Mr. Brothers has confirmed that. Thank you, sir. Sure, uh thank you, Chair. Um for Spencer, I appreciate you coming and I think he is a, did you tell me you were a Warren County native?
Yes, I'm a Warren County, I'm a Warren County native. And I I considered a privilege to um conduct business in the county where I was born and raised in, so thank you for that.
We we appreciate you coming and I appreciate what you said about the contract. We at this point are not asking for, you know, help with bulky items and and white goods, et cetera. But if you could just uh see if your staff could just have the flexibility if there is an elderly resident that comes and they have a bag of trash at the time that the compactor is not there, that they would be willing just to, you know, take a bag of trash. But we're not asking for that level of service for having, like I said, bulk goods taken and that sort of stuff.
Yes, we'll take that in consideration and there again, we'll we'll go back to look at our contract and make sure that um that we're good with that.
Can you hold it one second? I want to make sure I recognize all my board of commissioners. Any questions or comments for your gentleman, please sit down. Mr. Hunt?
Well, well, my only concern is that I hope you all won't start discriminating against older people from working there, you know, because I I might need a job. So I just wanted to say that for this work.
I'm sure you we do not discriminate. Uh we we put it up on our website, we have a position open and uh you know, we we have a lot of part-time, you know, helpers come in, these guys are at a time age. Um we don't get a lot of uh young um younger uh people applying for these positions. But although we have some of the workforce um that are young, so we just kind of and we send them to the work steps so to make sure that they meet the qualifications on the off-site.
Wait, you just signed this one option, please put him at like a convenience site. Please do. Commissioner Baker?
No, County Manager covered mine.
All right. And Mr. Powell?
No, good.
All right, sir, gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight. I just think that, you know, you know who we work for and that's who we get out of our our issues from. And we really appreciate you coming out tonight. I know you want to be a new village and bring it, take it to your people and come back to us. And I'm pretty sure that we can get this worked out for our citizens. Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, I have one final item for you this evening and it has to do with um our broadband project that we have been working on. As you mentioned previously, we have been working on broadband for the greater part of of this year.
Mr. Jones, you said it just a little bit loud. I want to make sure everybody hears this here.
We have been working on our broadband project for, uh, the greater part of this, this year. And effort has been led by Ms. Duncan and a, and a committee that we have been working on. Uh, we also have earlier this year passed a grant policy. And that grant policy requires us to get approval from you all before we, um, um, apply for grants that require a match from the county. So where we are on the broadband project is, uh, we went through an RFP process. Uh, we were not able to, um, find, um, some providers. We had some additional conversations with providers. And, um, we came up to a point where we, uh, were trying to make sure that we were leveraging our county dollars. And we found a federal program that we wanted to see if we would qualify for. And we have to wait until December to figure out if we are going to have some vendors qualify for those federal funds to be used in Warren County for broadband. So ahead of that, the state of North Carolina has some additional funds due to the fund that you received from the federal government for, um, coronavirus relief. And it's called the Great Grant, and it's for growing rural economies with access to technology. And so we had a provider who was interested in applying for those funds from the state of North Carolina on behalf of Warren County, and they wanted us to be able to provide a match to them. Um, and so that matches about up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If they were to receive one point one million dollars, uh, from the state. And so they asked for a letter of support. We had to get that letter of support to them in October. Um, but I wanted to make sure that we put this back to have it formally approved by you all, uh, to sustain the plans of our grant process.
Okay, great. Um, so let's take care of that first. Okay, Mr. Jones? Um, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the request from the county manager that's moving the best interest to expand, um, broadband throughout the county. Uh, this is, uh, our policy that we, um, we approve this, our in-town motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the, um, application for the Great Grant program for Warren County.
Second, then properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve the grant, um, request. As Mr. Jones has stated to us, is there any discussion?
Uh.
Yes, sir?
What would be the maximum match? Uh, I thought I heard two hundred and fifty.
Right, that's.
Okay.
Yes, that would be the maximum that we would have the county two hundred and fifty. And we talked about it in the presentation that you all, about a month or two ago, I think you mentioned up to two sixty, but two fifty is okay.
And I want to add that, uh, before thinking of this board of commissioners, we approved, I think it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that's in our budget already to aid in our advancement of broadband throughout the county. So we're pretty much over halfway there for, for the, for this grant, uh, match, if that be the case. So, um, that was a, that was good on our part.
Right. We, we don't anticipate coming back for a budget limit or anything because we're almost half of them at the year. So we can be able to use the funds this year and wait till a budgeting for next year, um, and that will cover, uh, that amount.
Sounds good.
Ms., Ms. Baker, if you don't mind, if I offer a friendly amendment not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's fine.
That okay with you?
Yes.
I'd just like to attach dollar amounts with, with motions, you know, for clarity in the future.
That's fine.
All right. Is there enough further discussion? All right. With the, uh, freely amendment that, uh, Mr. Commissioner Hunt just expressed to be accepted, um, all things high. Oh, is that motion carried? Mr. Jones?
Sure. Here, that concludes my items this evening. Thank you.
Thanks so much. So, uh, I just want to make a comment on broadband. We have, the, the board of commissioners have really been doing our hard work to ensure that broadband is expanded throughout the county. Uh, this right here is just another, uh, process that we're utilizing to ensure that broadband is, is expressed throughout the county. Of course, COVID has shown us the impact that COVID, that, uh, broadband has on our citizens as a whole and definitely our children. So we are moving full steam ahead and ensuring that we get this done correctly from a sustainability of long-term use throughout, uh, Warren County's history. So, um, thank you, Mr. Jones. We're going to move right on to, um, item number six, which is the office's, uh, continue, this is a budget, um, six B. Budget number six of the fiscal year 2019, county budget ordinance, Mr. Jones?
Okay, there are. Budget amendment, Mr. First is actually budget amendment number five.
I'm sorry, did I miss?
Yes.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, going on item number six, uh, five, this is a good one, county budget ordinance. Okay. Uh, this is, this is, so that's the third session, and, um, we want to be tied with this time. If there's anything else, uh, if there's nothing else that needs to be discussed out there, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item six A as presented.
And probably most by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve six A as stated and requested. Is there any discussion? In all the favors of eye, oh, is that motion is carried? Uh, now, two sixty, which is the budget number six of the fiscal year 2019, Warren County budget ordinance. Mr. Jones?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. This is a, a new amendment, six A and six B. Uh, these were some adjustments that Ms. Braffer, uh, was able to make before she, uh, left us. I can review those items with you, um, if you'd like.
Well, uh, board of commissioners, any, any details that you would like to ask Mr. Mills about this, uh, requested budget amendment? And I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item six B as presented.
Okay.
And probably move by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve six B, uh, number six as stated and requested. Is there any discussion? In all the favors of eye, oh, is that motion is carried? This is item number seven, uh, just to follow with the public hearing, and a little bit of a seven A. This is a request of the county's zoning ordinance.
Chair, we, we did, we had a little bit of an error with it. There was a six A and six B. You were actually on a six A, we need to do six B. So, so Mr. Hunt, you made a motion for six B, it was actually six A. Six B is a separate one.
Probably did six A.
I thought we did six A.
We did six A.
We did six A.
All right, so.
And we just approved six B.
Is this six A?
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Is that the one?
Under six B?
Can I have a last meeting?
No, so, all right. So you're on item number six.
That's A.
Right, but you had budget amendment number five, which was A. So you're on six B, which was the second budget amendment. And there's the third one, which I'm going to say six C.
Okay, all right. Okay. What, what is six C?
It is.
Because I don't have six C.
So, six C is an eighteen thousand dollar budget amendment for the board, for the Board of Elections for some additional funding they have received from the CARES Act, um, to provide, uh, safe elections and pay for poll work.
All right, um, first, let's, let's do this, uh, to make sure that we are properly aligned, because I don't have six, uh, C.
I ain't got it either.
All right. Somebody tell me something.
So it, it's confusing. You were on item number six, but you approved budget amendment number five. And then you moved on to budget amendment number six, and it's budget amendment six A B for item number six. If that's confusing.
Let me ask the question, how many budget amendments do we have?
Two.
Total?
Three. All right, I'm currently seeing two.
I only see two on our agenda, when I'm happy.
And B.
Okay, number five was yours, with, number five was yours with the grant. With the, with the great, with the, um, great grant.
Right.
And this is number eight.
Right.
And we did that.
You did it.
And then you just asked for this one, and I, Mr. Hunt, you made the difference with this one.
Right.
Right, so that has two parts to it.
This has two.
That has two parts.
Okay, that's confusing. Number six has two parts. But we don't have a visit on ours.
Exactly.
Okay. What's the first part?
So we did.
See that.
Do you have the slide?
I mean, I thought, that, that was the fault, is say, you're saying this one is A, and the other is C?
Yes. Right. So this item six A, um, is for emergency management, thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Emergency medical services, forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one and six cents. These are all additional revenues that we're receiving in these departments. Um, the health department receiving additional fifteen thousand dollars, um, for emergency preparedness work. Um, and then DSS receives nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents, um, from New Energy for a grant. And then DSS receives some additional money for public assistance, um, that they, um, have used from unspent funds in fiscal year nineteen. And those are the items on item six A.
So we approved those, right? Already?
Yes, yes. We just called it six B, but it's actually six A.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to know where to go from here, because the reason is not matching up with your request, so.
So if we go to the next one, you see item six B, and it's simply eighteen thousand dollars for the Board of Elections for additional funds that they receive, um, for providing additional, uh, paid for poll work.
So, gentlemen, what I entertain a motion for approval?
But isn't that a number on six B? We have a second one, too?
That, that's the one that we were on, six B.
Right, that's the one.
Um, yeah, item number six, number B.
Right.
I thought we approved this.
No, we, the first one we discussed was A, but we called it B.
Who called it B?
Yeah, I thought we, um, A already, and then go on to B, and then we tried to approve this.
So, so, let, let, let me, let me bring this back, so we can get through this, because, um, we have approved, I'm going to go to my agenda, and if we got to make an amendment from there, then that's what we're going to do. All right? So according to my agenda right here, six A is the budget number five of the fiscal year 2019, Warren County budget ordinance, which we prefer to, uh, which we prefer to give today from our, uh, reception, and we approve that.
Right, 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 right.
Now, my next one on my agenda says six C, continue. And it's six B, but I think we're on six, to the fiscal year 2019, Warren County budget ordinance, which we just approved.
All right. I wanted to be sure that you approved six B. When we, when we were talking about it, we didn't call it B. We called everything B. And so I wanted to make sure we were okay.
Okay. So have we approved to your satisfaction?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, good deal. All right. So we're good to go. Item seven, follow up, uh, the public hearing. All right? And this is, uh, a question of the Warren County zoning ordinance. Uh, table two and one dimensional requirements, increased height maximum for, uh, mixed town business, um, um, neighborhood business, HP and, um, LI and HI zoning districts, and table permitted uses conditional use permits, which is P O D C R. And what we're going to do, this group, they have petitioned to November, uh, the 17th?
Yes, sir, correct. So the request.
So they want to do the 17th, right? November the 10th, and then December, is it second? All right.
Then December 7th, be more than.
Seven, I'm sorry, the first Monday, I'm sorry. Uh, not to cut you off, but we'll be able to discuss this. That's when we'll be able to discuss this, right? Ms. Kingsbury?
Yes, sir.
I'm leaning on you, man.
Do you will repeat what you're saying, Commissioner Baker?
Would, would we be in line by table of this, if the board of commissioners, uh, ensure that everyone's prepared when it comes to this, and going to this, December the 7th?
Yes. Yes, you would, Chair.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, boy, absolutely.
All right, so my table, this is the planning board. Step back.
Correct. To address, there was proposal to drive Kingsbury to state subdivision to add another amendment in comparison to this one in consideration. But process said the planning board has to review any amendment first to make a recommendation of this one. So during preparation for November 10th meeting, which is next Tuesday, we were getting ready for. And then for that, it'll be December 7th for subsequent meeting of this one.
Right, so then we could vote on this agenda item, but any action that we take from the meeting that you guys have on November 7th, does that require to have a public hearing?
Uh, in the December 7th meeting, when you're deciding one, that's, there's, that's the last hearing before that. So November 10th is when the planning board reviews proposed for this new amendment. At the December 7th meeting, when you want to take action, whether to approve or modify your table or not.
Okay, let me just make sure I'm sure. So for the agenda items before it's right now, which is item seven A. You guys have a meeting on November 10th in regards to amendment to this, right? And the last to the second, so.
Well, the, the setback is one part of what was proposed as an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a setback by itself, it's part of the amendment to go through to your mistakes.
Okay. So now, December 7th, you wouldn't have to have additional public hearings, we'd actually be able to vote.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
Let me clarify that. Uh, there's something being. What's going to the planning board is another version of an amendment that is being suggested. Once it reaches, makes it through the planning board, there would have to be a hearing, a public hearing on that. So that's kind of separate. What's before you today can be tabled in order to give time for that other, um, proposed amendment to come. So I guess you can decide on what's before you on the 7th, and there'll probably also need to be a public hearing on what they're proposing on the 7th as well, correct?
Yes.
All right. Does that make sense?
All right, I sound familiar with that, thanks.
Well, then that leaves me to a question then, um, we, we have, that information would not weigh on this decision then, if we make a decision on December 7th, Mr. Kingsbury?
You don't have, correct. There, there are two different amendments. And that, what is decided, if you decide to go with that one, it doesn't have to weigh on this decision here, correct?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, boy, what, what do you decide to do then? Um, the, the Kingsbury saying this is going to be two separate incident, um, situations.
Two situations while during that time, we go for either or.
Well, uh, Ms. Kingsbury, help me out on that. Uh, they're going to have that hearing on the 10th. But then, if it's cool, you. but then if it's cool, you can weigh in also, on November the tenth, they have their hearing, but.
They're reviewing the material, reviewing the proposed amendment.
Okay.
To recommend to this board for.
But number, November tenth, that proposed amendment is going to the planning board.
Correct, yes.
And then after it goes to the planning board, it has to come before the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing related to it. If you just got to take this, what's before you tonight, if you decide not to take action, it could go to December seventh for action, not another hearing, just for action.
Okay, so let's do this, um, I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be clarified in this situation, so I think we just need to table it and, and take action on it on December the seventh. If, uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, in agreement with that, without, uh, in a result, our, that would be our request, so, but, uh, it's up to the majority to do that, so I hear from you, we decide to do that.
You want me to offer motion to the, to table?
Yeah, but I, I want to make sure that I got a consensus before we do that, that that's, that, that was in order, so.
Well, yeah, well, they're, they're voting.
Yeah.
Still have carries on motion.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, we table agenda item seven A until December the.
Seven, yes, sir.
Second.
All right, then proper motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Powell, that we table seven A into December the seventh meeting. Is there any further discussion? In all favor, is aye?
Aye.
Those nay, motion is carried, thank you, Mr. Crew, yes, sir. And thank you, Mr. Jones and Mr. Crew, me and Mr. Kingsbury, sorry. All right, we're gonna deal with seven B, which is petition rezoning, uh, residential, commercial, RZ twenty-twenty zero one, one parcel, one point five acres of land, plus minus from agricultural to residential to neighborhood business. It's located on, um, Tax Map, uh, eight four dash thirteen on Jackson Town Road in Nutbush Township. And, um, I entertain a motion for approval on the seven B.
Mr. Chair, I approve that we approve petition for rezoning, um, RZ dash twenty-twenty dash zero one from agricultural to residential to neighborhood business at Tax Map eight four dash thirteen on Jackson Town Road in the Nutbush Township.
Second. Then proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve seven B as stated and requested, with any discussion, in none, all in favor, is aye? Uh-huh. Those nay, motion is carried. Uh, eight A, and this is the follow-up to October twenty-first, twenty-twenty work session, and, uh, Mr. Kingsbury, uh, amended our, um, property, uh, commis- correction, county real property service action policy and procedures, where we had, um, opportunity to review, and, uh, if there is anything else that needs to be stated about that, please do it this time. If not, I will entertain a motion for approval, and I see Mr. Kingsbury does.
I do apologize, Mr. Chair, can I see your mic, then? I do, I do apologize, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure, um, some concerns came up regarding just the process, so to be very clear.
Yes, sir.
Process, I, before you, I amended what was presented and added some, um, just some procedural clarification. It's not on the screen, it's, I, I think I passed it out. And it's, but changes I made are in blue, so I would ask if you could table this item, so you can have time to review those changes in blue. Um, it's just some clarifications on what happens after, um, property is posted a second time. Uh, we just want to make sure the public knows how it, uh, is dealt with after, if no one deals with it on both deals. So if you got to review that and then bring it back, um, for your approval consideration on December seventh.
All right, no problem, sir, that's your request, that's what we'll do, uh, unless there's some objection from the county board of commissioners here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to offer motion to table agenda item eight until the December seventh meeting.
Second.
Then proper motion by Commissioner Hunt, uh, second by Commissioner Baker, that we table, um, uh, item number eight as, uh, request by the county attorney to December the seventh, is there any discussion? In none, all in favor, is aye?
Uh-huh.
Those nay, motion is carried. Item number nine, this is consider approval application for emergency, uh, manager annual performance grants, and, uh, Mr. Jones.
Sure, Chair, this is, uh, annual funding that we receive, uh, from the Department of Emergency Services, and, uh, it requires a local match of fifty percent, and it's not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, um, for our match.
All right. So ladies and gentlemen, um, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the management annual performance grant from Public Safety Department, um, for a local match of not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Then proper motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunter, who approve nine A as stated and requested, is there any discussion? In none, all in favor, is aye?
Sorry.
Those nay, motion is carried. Item number ten, this is consider revised fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty home community care, which is, uh, uh, block grant, uh, A C C B G, um, funding plan authorized, uh, Chairman Davis to sign, same, uh, Mr. Jones.
Chair, I don't have anything to add, uh, other than what you said in the next one.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I approve that we approve revised F Y nineteen twenty, um, home community care block grant funding for you.
Second.
Then proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item number ten as stated and requested, is there any discussion? In none, all in favor, is aye?
Uh-huh.
Those nay, motion is carried. Item number eleven, which is Board of Committee, uh, Committee Commissioners, uh, discussion here, and we're gonna start off by, there's a, uh, eleven A, consider draft by law, so courthouse where memorial committee. I think we all got a copy of this, um, so I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I approve that we approve the draft bylaws for the courthouse where memorial committee.
Second. Then proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve eleven A as stated and requested, is there any further discussion, in none, all in favor, is aye?
Uh-huh.
Those nay, motion is carried. Eleven B, this is consider appoint Stanley Jones to the, uh, E D C, um, Commission for Attorney, number one, twenty-twenty to June thirty, twenty, uh, twenty-three, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we appoint Stanley Jones to the Economic Development Commission for Turn, beginning November first, twenty-twenty-two, end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Second.
Then proper motion by Commissioner Baker, then, excuse me, um, then proper motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve eleven B as stated and requested, is there any discussion? In none, all in favor, is aye?
Uh-huh.
Those nay, motion is carried. Item number twelve, more to, um, County Commissioner updates, and we'll start off with Ms. Baker. Ms. Powell?
No.
Ms. Pierce?
No, I don't have any updates.
And Mr. Hunt?
No, not at this time.
All right, um, neither do I, and just want to ensure that, um, tomorrow's election day, you have to vote, if you haven't already, is the, um, is your civic duty to do that. Uh, stay safe out there with, uh, still with COVID nineteen, still real alive, and stay, um, safe and do what's requested and asked of us. All right, um, item number thirteen, which is closed session in accordance with N C T S one forty-three, three one eight, eleven A, three and six, for discussion attorney client privilege and personnel matters, I entertain a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we enter to closed sessions in accordance with N C T S one forty-three, dash eighteen, eleven A, sections three and six, for discussion attorney client privilege and personnel matters.
Second.
Then proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Hunter, that we're doing the closed session, is there any discussion? In none, all in favor, is aye?
All right.
Those nay, we hereby enclose session, thank you.
Those names, we hereby enclose session. Thank you.
Please.
All right, um.
I think my battery is going to be up. We're good, we're good. No, somebody else can do the talking.
Well, we can still hear.
Okay. Let's hear about a, okay, please, Ms. Baker. What you doing there, Ms. Baker?
You shouldn't get up and budge it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board I entertain a motion to come back from closed session, back to open session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we return from closed session back to open session.
Second. And proper to motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, to return to open session from closed session. Um, all in favor of this, aye?
Aye.
Close night, we here back in open session. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the board, we're gonna, um. We'll do 14A. All right, I'm going to put this on the agenda. I don't have, you gotta hit me up with this. We did use 14A. We're gonna call this 14A, and we're just, this is gonna be, I'm sorry, it's right here in front of me, it's 13A. 13A, I'm sorry. But, yeah. Take your time out the region. So ladies and gentlemen, the board, we're gonna deal with item, um, uh, 13A, which is appoint interim finance director. And, um, that'd be the first motion. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, ask, uh, Bert Dunlap to help me out here. I think what we discussed is, uh, first add items to the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Do they firstly, the add items to the agenda?
No, I can say it. Then the item 13A, 13B, and 13C, you're gonna add it to the agenda, then you're gonna take action on it.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, that's request to add, to add, uh, 13A, 13B, and 13C to our agenda. I entertain a motion for that addition, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add items 13A, 13B, and 13C to the agenda.
Second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we add the appropriate items to our agenda. Is there any discussion? Here not all the papers, aye?
Aye.
Close night, motion is carried. So we're gonna deal with, um, 13A, which is the, um, appointment of the interim finance director. Can this be one of the same? But I guess now we're just wanting as it is, because we've approved it like that. So I entertain a motion that we appoint an interim finance director. Which is gonna coincide with B, with, I mean, with C, as I, as I see it, is that correct? But, since we've already approved it, just, we'll just go through the motions of, um, 13A.
Um, so, Mr. Chair, I move that for agenda, I run 13A, we want Sandra Newton as our interim finance director.
Second.
It's been proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we, uh, approve 13A interim finance director, uh, as stated. Is there any discussion? Here not all of it, it was aye?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I need to amend that somewhat.
Okay.
I need to have it stated that we appoint Sandra Newton to position of interim Warren County Finance Officer in accordance with NCGS 159-24, effective November 2nd, 2020, and increase her annual salary by $5,000, and have it that she reports to the Warren County manager.
Second.
All right, that's the amendment, um. Yeah, and, 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 and second by Commissioner Baker, is there any discussion? All the papers are aye?
Aye.
Um, motion is carried. So I'm looking at item number B, 13B, which, uh, which is authorization to honor interim finance officer of facsimile, um, to signature Warren County operating accounts. That is the motion, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, we think we approve, um, the organization to honor interim finance officer, the facsimile signature for Warren County operating accounts.
Second.
It's been proper motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item, uh, 13B as stated requested. Is there any discussion? Here not all the papers are aye?
Aye.
Close night, motion is carried. I don't believe there's a C now. Is that correct?
It is a C.
Yes, a C.
Must have been.
Oh, I'm sorry. Long night, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, um, item 13C, which is to appoint finance, um, officer, Mr., um, finance, Mr. Lee Fines Jr., um, to, um, finance officer start date of, uh, salary of $63,500, and date of, uh, November 16th, 2020. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Lee Fines Jr. to the position of finance officer starting 11/16/2020, with a start, starting salary of $63,500.
Second.
It's been proper to motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we, uh, appoint Mr. Fines, uh, Lee Fines Jr., position of finance officer as stated requested, and start date. Is there any discussion? All in favor of this, aye?
Aye.
Close night, welcome aboard, Mr. Fines. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, thank y'all for y'all's diligence and doing what you're doing, but I think it's time for us to conclude our, uh, November 2nd board meeting, and I entertain a motion for November, so.
Ask a question, can I amend? Do we need to give Mr. Fines authority, is it true, since he'll be coming on November 16th?
We, 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 we can wait, we can do that in, we can do that in December, can't we?
Yeah.
If, if we have somebody in place.
Somebody's already signed it in, so we can do that in, in December.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, you know, I think, um, you'll go back and amend the amendment for, um, Sandra Newton. Because I just gave her, uh, facsimile approval for the Warren County operating account, but I believe I need to add these additional ones, which is the one down.
I saw that.
Yeah, so, I need to go back.
An amendment to your motion.
I thought I heard you say that, but.
I just need to the one, the Warren County operating account, but now.
But, but, uh, yeah, but I, I, I was in the impression that you were saying as presented, you know, and included all of that.
Well, okay, so they're inclusive, and they're right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
I mean, it's, it's, it's there in life. Yeah, you know what I mean?
Okay, that's fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's go home.
Yes.
All right, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move we, I move that we adjourn our November 2nd county commission meeting.
Second, it's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we adjourn our meeting, and we are hereby adjourned. See you later, Mr. Hunt.